Let's see, we have the council is present. Staff is here that needs to be, thank you Pam for coming tonight. We have some additions to the agenda, any? That anyone can think of, okay? Declarations of ex-party contact or conflicts of interest. And I don't hear any, anything, so presentation, comments from the public. Mr. Campbell, would you take us through the plan of the year recognition for the wastewater treatment plant, please? I don't know, I guess, it's easier than calling three wires.
Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. Tonight I want to have the distinct pleasure in honor of awarding and recognizing the city of state for the plan of the year. So, to give you kind of a brief background, in January of 2015, the staff at the wastewater plant was challenged to take pride in ownership in the wastewater plant and to change the culture of the facility. To their credit, they accepted this challenge and set a goal of working to become the best plant in the Pacific Northwest with a target goal of becoming the PNCWA plant of the year. The staff immediately came together to accomplish this goal. On September 24th of last year, the city hosted a tour for local operators and the PNCWA. I was personally dazzled by the appearance and the looks of the plant. The transformation from January of 15 to September of 15 was striking. And as I was talking to people who were part of the tour, some gentlemen from OAWU, which is the Oregon Association of Water Utilities, they were commenting to me about how nice our plant looked, how clean it looked, and the clear pride of ownership that our staff had taken in the plan. What was also striking is they talked about the importance of taking care of the plant and that they had two plants that were built at the same time. They said one needs to be replaced because the plant is so rundown, hasn't been taken care of, another one has been taken care of and the plant is still just like new. So, it really shows the importance of working hard to keep the plant clean and operational and to take pride in what they're doing out there. So, I'm honored to say that we have been recognized and awarded the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association and the West Central Section of Oregon Plan of the Year for 2015. So, I'd like to recognize some staff members who made this possible. With us tonight, we have Brenda and Craig, and I'll talk a little bit more about them in just a second, but also some of the other people at the plant. We have Craig Campbell, Joe Gesick, Merle McLeod, Jason Miley, and Jason Summerlin.
Justin.
Justin Summerlin, I'm sorry.
Josh.
Josh Summerlin.
Yeah, I'm sorry too.
Oh, boy. I want to specifically acknowledge Dan Christian, who in January of 15 promised to become a leader and he first discussed setting the goal of plan of the year. Brenda Kukin, who takes great pride in the ownership of the facility. Craig Prosser, who came on board as the chief operator and helped lead the charge. And Lance Lowick, who provided the direction, the leadership, and the resources to make this all possible. In January of 2015, I promised Dan Christian public recognition at the city council meeting if they won plan of the year. So, tonight, I'm honored and privileged to be able to make good on that promise. So, with that, I'd like to hand this to Brenda and give each of them a chance to have a few comments.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here tonight to accept this award and for allowing us to do our job and to have a great facility for the city that we can show off, be a gem for the city. The real kudos, though, go to the gentlemen that are behind me that put the effort out into the plant to get this award. They determined just over a year ago that this is what they wanted to do, this was their goal, this is what they were going to work towards. And it's a real accomplishment that when they set their minds to it, that they can reach this high of achievement for us. So, again, I wanted to introduce my staff that's here. The chief operator, Craig Prosser. So, I just wanted to acknowledge him. He's come on staff in the last year, he's been here just about a year with his leadership at the plant. It's been great to have a second-in-command that is helping motivate the staff and keep things going. His knowledge of pumps and motors has been very appreciated and helpful. And so, this year, we've accomplished quite a bit, and especially with his knowledge and help. Thank you very much.
Is, Billy, she's here, okay. Ms. Height-Mur, with a YMC update on the State and Family Memorial Pool. You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Well, the pool's doing really good. I emailed Alyssa the financials for the last few months, January through April. If she put them in your packet, you'll notice that we're making money for the first time in a long time. In March, we were in, we made $7,000. Last month, we ended up making $2,300, or in April, we haven't got the financials yet from May. The pool is so busy, I can't even tell you. We get happy when there's only 15 people there now, so we can have slight breaks. In the next month of swim lessons, we have 20 more kids registered. I've had to hire more staff to accommodate for more swim lessons for more lifeguards. We started doing preschool swim lessons. Salem Child Development Center at Salem is bringing their kids over. We did 346 kids at 325 apiece each time they came in. And each group came in for three months. We made over 3,500 with it. And that's 3 through 6th grade, mostly three-year-olds. Which, if anybody's been around preschool swim lessons, it's a little loud for a couple times. And then Tiny Hands Daycare has started to come in and do private lessons with us also. On top of that, our normal swim lessons are booming. We still have over 60 kids on our swim team. We're getting ready to start our summer swim team, which is our cars program. And I know I have, in my swim lessons that I do in the morning, five kiddos that are going out for that. And then I know in our night lessons, we have at least 15 to 20 kids going out for it. So, we have a prospect of being over 30 kids in that. We also have our junior lifeguard program that's going to start. This is so that kids 11 to 14 can get an idea of what it's like to be lifeguards. They're monitored by other lifeguards, they're trained by lifeguards. They learn how to properly scan a pool, help with daily operations as far as running the slide, running the rope swing. They can get in and assist with swim lessons. It just gives them an opportunity to start learning future job along with volunteering in their community. And then that starts here pretty soon. And we are also getting ready to increase our membership. The Y is only going to increase the membership $3 across the board for resident and non-resident. Yearly is going to go up $20, and then our punch cards are going to go up 5. Daily drop-ins for residents are going to go up 25 cents, and non-members will go up 50, or non-residents. As you know, we have to go up with the increase in minimum wage, almost. All but four of my staff out of the 20 that work there are all at $925. So, it's a big jump. Besides that, we're doing really good. Do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Billy, you said the residents and non-residents are going with $3 increase?
Yeah, that's what the YMCA came up with.
Gotcha, so the non-residents would be paying the same amount to come into the pool as residents?
So, right now, a resident for a, so we have auto deduct and not auto deduct. We give them a big discount for me not having to hunt them down every month. So, and we'll just go for a regular adult. So, for right now, an adult who does auto pay is $30 a month, and it'll go up to $33. One that, a person that I have to go find is $38. For non-residents, it's $48 right now, or $45, and it went up to $48.
So, there is a difference?
There is a difference.
Okay.
And we make sure they know there's a difference.
Do you guys keep track of the lessons for the kids, what residence they come from?
Right now, the way the Y had it set up originally is they didn't have, they have member breaks and non-member breaks for programming.
Okay.
So, unfortunately, swim lessons falls under the programming.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay. Next, don't let me forget to ask for comments from the public, but first, pedestrian safety presentation by Officer Scott Moomy, state, please.
Mayor and council, I'm very pleased to introduce Scott Moomy, he's our traffic safety officer. He's, all of the officers do traffic stops and patrol for traffic safety, but that's Scott's, that is Scott's priority. He does go to the schools and does safety presentations as far as driving and for walking, and he does different presentations around the community as well, doing the same thing. He's one of the officers that you also see on the motorcycle, and today, he's going to talk about pedestrian traffic safety.
Could we get the lights back here? Thank you.
All right, Mayor and City Council, thank you for letting me present this today. I'll try to make it as quick as possible. I'm not a graceful speaker as Keith is, but we'll see if I can live up to it. So, we're going to talk a little bit today about some issues in town that we've been trying to deal with, the biggest one being recent pedestrian versus vehicle crashes that have been happening in the city. If you want to go to the next, one more there, Rich? Yeah, go with that one. So, I've put together some statistics over the last three years, just kind of as a comparison, so you guys can get an idea of where we're at as a city for crashes. This one shows, so we have broken up between crashes and hit-and-runs. Obviously, most of our hit-and-runs are going to be your parking lot, door dings and stuff like that, or minor damages. We don't have a whole lot of major hit-and-run accidents here, they're mostly smaller ones. But, we totaled them up there, back in 2014, we had 95. 2015, it went up by one to 96, and so far this year, as of June 3rd, when I ran the statistics, we're at 54. So, we're about on track for the 100 mark by the end of the year. Next slide, Rich. So, I highlighted a couple incidents from this year, most of them just recently here in the last few months. We've had six incidents, vehicles and pedestrians. As you can see, three of them were non-injury, all the bicycle ones, those were mostly, I believe, all of them were intersections where a bicyclist rode out in front of a stopped vehicle, the vehicle started to move and just bumped him, that kind of thing. The other three that ended up being injuries, the first one on the 25th there was the bus versus the child over there by Heritage Loop, I'm sure everybody's familiar with that one. The one from the 19th, I believe, was a, actually a parking lot incident where there was a possible broken leg out of that one. Just somebody backed into an individual who was walking behind the vehicle. And then the last one, it was just recent, a few days ago, we had some kids in the back of a pickup truck, and one of them fell out, cracked his head open in the parking lot. That's, that is actually one of the focuses when we do our seatbelt enforcement grants. One of the enforcement periods focuses on children in truck beds for this exact reason. Unfortunately, when you mix vehicles and high school students, they don't always make the best decisions, and so situations like this are going to occur. You want to go to the next one there, Rich? So, this is, sorry for the blurry photo, my nighttime photography skills are lacking, obviously. This is just to kind of illustrate to you guys that we do have some more serious accidents that actually happen in town from time to time. This is at Fern Ridge and First Avenue at the stoplight. This was late one morning, somebody made a McDonald's run, and I think they were enjoying their cheeseburger a little too much, and they ran the red light and got T-boned and ended up flipping their vehicle over. So, that's just to illustrate why we need to be out there trying to enforce the traffic laws that we do, so that people are a little more aware of their driving surroundings and can pay attention. Next slide. So, this, we're going to talk a little bit about speed enforcement. We recently started doing a little bit of focused speed enforcement in the city, and after you look at the statistics, you'll see why. Next slide, please. For the three-year total, the speeding violations, we have two different speeding violations that we cite for. One is just the main speeding ordinance, and then the other one is called violation of the basic rule. This can actually include somebody who's actually pretty close to the speed limit, but it would be considered like winter driving, if the roads are icy and the person's driving a little too fast, it could be unsafe, and they can get cited under that ORS. So, anyway, back in 2014, we had 209 traffic stops related to speed enforcement. Went up to 292 in 2015, and then as of June 3rd this year so far, we're already at 290. So, we're kind of on pace to double what we did last year as far as speed enforcement goes, and the next slide that you guys see will show you why. This is what we call our speed over the limit comparison. When we run statistics, it'll show us what the violator was pulled over for, what their mile per hour over the speed limit was. Back in 2014, we were at 24.2, 24.59 miles per hour over the speed limit. That was the average of all the drivers we stopped that year for how fast they were going over the speed limit. And I know that kind of seems unreasonable in the city limits, but this also includes speeds just outside the city limits, so the 55 zones. For instance, if an officer's coming back from the jail, they might pull somebody over on the highway that's, you know, doing 85 miles an hour, so that's going to skew your stats just a little bit. Last year, it came down to 18.95, this year so far, we're down to 18.2, 18.22. So, that's something that we're trying to focus on and get that way down, 18 miles over the speed limit is way too fast for our particular speed limits in the city. And I'll go over a little bit more of that here toward the end of the presentation. Next slide, Rich. This next one I'm going to talk about is the crosswalk violations in the city, next slide. So, back in 2014, we stopped 61 motorists for fail-to-yield pedestrians in a crosswalk. The high number that year was due to the crosswalk grant that we did that year, and actually in 2015, we did it as well. As you can see, people started to comply because we did so many enforcements, we started to get that number down a little bit. This year, we're only at six, and that's because we didn't get the grant this year, and therefore, we didn't do all the extra enforcements that we normally do, although this summer, we are going to, the admin has decided to put a little overtime toward it, so that we can go out and do a couple of crosswalk enforcements to just kind of remind people, especially as school gets near, we want to remind people to keep an eye out for the crosswalks for the kids in particular. Go to the next slide, please, Rich. So, this is, this is something that I'm sure will confuse everybody, as it confuses me as well. Oregon has not done the best job of making this very clear to the motoring public as far as what the laws are concerning crosswalks. As you can see by the photo, there are multiple different scenarios of when you need to yield to a pedestrian in a crosswalk. In Staton, we don't have two-lane roads like this in one direction. Our only larger, large road is going to be First Avenue where we have the turn lane in the middle. In that particular instance on First Avenue, motorists, when a pedestrian enters a crosswalk, they need to yield one and a half lanes. So, basically, they need to stop if the pedestrian is in their crosswalk or has entered the middle turn lane. They would need to stop. If the motorist is on the far side, they don't need to stop until the pedestrian has gotten to the center turn lane. A little bit confusing, we try to encourage everybody to just stop completely if somebody's in the crosswalk, no matter what, it's the easiest way to do it. Let the pedestrian get across the road completely, and then you can move on your way. It's only going to, for most people, they can get across the crosswalk in, you know, five seconds. Some people like to take a little more time, but it's very confusing. If you look it up, there's pictures like this online to illustrate it a little bit better, but we try to encourage people to just stop and remain stopped as long as somebody's in the crosswalk until they can get across, that's the safest thing to do. Next slide, please, Rich, and the next one. This is another area we've been focused on a little bit, was the cell phones. People are getting more and more distracted with the amount of things that we have in our vehicles, the biggest one being cell phones. And obviously, the biggest violators of this are your teenagers who are texting and constantly have to be on social media, and I'm sure you've seen articles lately of some teenagers that had gotten into crashes as they were Snapchatting. I don't even know what that is, but they were Snapchatting and taking pictures as they were driving. So, that just shows you how they want to stay connected. Back in 2014, we had 96 people that were stopped for this, and 2015, it went clear up to 228, and so far this year, we're at 130. So, we're on pace for about 260, 275 people being stopped for being on their mobile communication devices. And obviously, the biggest, the most unsafe violators as far as that goes, I believe, are the texters, because they're usually looking down. So, we're trying to crack down on that a little bit, I'll talk a little more in depth here at the end about that. Next slide, please, Rich. This is a little graphic I pulled off the internet to just show people why it's important to stay off of cell phones. It says here that teens, 70% of teens admitted to talking on the cell phone while driving in the past 30 days. AAA did these statistics. And more than 50% of them admitted to reading text messages or emails while driving. So, it continues to be a big source of distraction, and it's something that we're trying to take care of here in the city, so we can keep our citizens as safe as possible. Next slide, please, Rich. I'm going to talk a little bit about seat belts real quick, next slide. So, back in 2014, as you can see, we only stopped 103 motorists that year for seatbelt violations. This was partially due to the fact that we didn't have the seatbelt grant, and so it just wasn't enforced as heavily. 2015, we went back to getting the seatbelt grant, and it exploded. 467 motorists were stopped for seatbelt violations. So, as you can see, this is an issue still in the town as far as people not wanting to put their seat belts on. This year so far, we're only at 167. We are working the seatbelt grant currently, and we still have quite a bit to do on that, so those statistics will probably go up quite a bit by the end of the year. But, we're trying to focus on getting people to understand why it's important to wear the seatbelts. I know a lot of people think it's their own decision and they can do as they choose, but it affects everybody when people aren't wearing their safety belts and they get into an accident, especially the uninsured people. It ends up costing all of us, because our insurance rates raise to cover all those medical expenses, and so this is why we try to encourage people to wear the seatbelts. Next slide, please, Rich. This is another little graphic I pulled off the internet, just stating that you're at 45% more risk of death when you're not wearing a safety belt. You're 30 times more likely to be ejected out of the vehicle. And three out of four people who were ejected out of their vehicles died from their injuries. Seatbelts reduce the risk by 50% of injury, and as you can see down at the bottom there, every 13 minutes, somebody loses their life, and every seven seconds, a person is injured due to non-seatbelt use of vehicles. Next slide, please, Rich. So, here's where I'm going to talk about some of the focused enforcements we've done throughout the year so far. November and December of 2015, we focused on cellphone enforcement. During this timeframe, we did 29 hours of enforcement. Three different officers did this. There was a total violation count of 250, this is for all, all violations included. 28 of those were for cellphone use. And February through May of 2016 so far, for the seatbelt enforcement, we've, we have that seatbelt grant that we were awarded this year, which gave us about 90 hours of enforcement time. So far, we've used 43 hours of that for different officers totaling 284 violations, 80 of which were for seatbelt violations. And in May of 2016, due to our high level of speed in the city, that the speed over the limit, we decided to dedicate some hours towards speed enforcement. I did this one myself for five hours, and we tallied up 32 violations, 13 of which were speeding. And as you can see there at the bottom, out of those 13 speeders, the average was about 12.3 miles over the speed limit, and it ranged between nine miles an hour and 19 miles an hour over the speed limit, and those were all on residential streets. So, that'll just kind of give you an idea that on a daily basis, we do still have some people that are in a hurry and forget that they don't live in those particular neighborhoods, and they tend to speed, and so we're going to try to curb that with continued enforcements. Next, Rich. So, that's all I had as far as my PowerPoint goes, and it's open to questions if anybody needs any clarification on anything.
Scott, is it fair to guess that Shaft, Fern Ridge Road is our, let's go, call it fastest street?
Speed limit-wise, it's our, I think that's our second fastest. We have, that's 35 miles an hour along there, with the exception of Fern Ridge, it turns into 45 at one point. East San Am's 40 miles an hour at one point, and then Wilco Road is 45. People who are violating the speed limit, for instance, we actually don't get a whole lot on Shaft Road that we pull over for. We do get some speeders on there that travel probably between the 40 and 45 mile an hour mark quite often. We've, through my enforcement periods, I've found East Jefferson Street is a big problem between 10th and 7th there. People coming into town from State and Syle Road, the speed limit drops to 30. We try not to enforce it until they get to around the Water Street area, but you'd be surprised at how many people continue to drive 50 miles an hour even at Water Street as they're flying into the four-way stop there. Those are some of the main areas in town. Obviously, we try to, we try to watch Shaft Road in front of the school, we try to do West Locust. West Locust on the west end is a big speed issue. People are heading toward that industrial area, it's 25 all the way till you get to Wilco, but we get quite a few speeders around the 45 mile an hour mark out there. So, we try to remind them that just because you're headed toward a industrial area, you still are passing all those residential houses where the kids are, and we need to be mindful of that and keep the speeds down, so. It's kind of, kind of all over the place as far as the speeds go.
Other questions, thoughts?
So, one last thing, the chief wanted me to go over these real quick with you guys. This is what we call our LiDAR unit, this is one of the units we use to measure speed on cars, as opposed to the radar units that are in the vehicle mounted. This one, we run stationary, it shoots a, we'll call it an invisible laser beam that goes out to the vehicle. When it gets to the vehicle, at let's say about 800 feet away, it's only about that big, so we can put it right on somebody's license plate and know for a fact that it's that one particular vehicle. This will give us the speed reading and it'll lock it in, and we'll be able to enforce our traffic laws on people that way. It's very, very accurate, very pinpoint, so we like to use that. And then, as you guys know, last year, you guys approved the purchase of the e-ticket system, which will hopefully streamline the paperwork process for the police department. So, I wanted to bring one of those tonight and show you guys what that kind of looks like. It's a small handheld device, basically, it's a large cellphone, and then it comes with a small thermal printer. These are very handy, we can take a violator's license, scan the back of it, it enters all their information for us, put in the vehicle information, pick the violations, and then print off the citation. No longer do people get the little eight-inch citation, they now get a two-foot citation that we had to pull up a few times to give them. This is saving not only the officer time and creating a safer environment for the officer, I believe, because it's reducing the amount of time you're on a traffic stop, which is an unknown situation. I can, I can fill out a citation on this in about probably 45 seconds, whereas when I used to hand write tickets, it would take me, you know, three, four minutes probably on a traffic stop, and that's, that's time looking down at that thing and having to look back up and really pay attention to things, whereas this, you can just hold it up and do your thing and get it over with real quickly. And then as far as the record staff goes, this all automatically gets uploaded into the system now, whereas back in the day when we did handwritten citations, we turned those in at the end of the shift, and then the record staff had to enter each and every one of those into the system, which was extremely time-consuming. So, this is going to be a safer alternative and as well as a huge time savings for not only us, but for the record staff. So, I just want to give a quick update on those things, and anybody have any questions about those?
No. One more question, though, Scott. Have you ever- Have you ever had to take a handheld device, cellphone, whatever, away from a distracted driver to get their attention, to tell them why they were stopped?
I've never taken one from anybody, but we, I have had people I've pulled over for that particular violation, and they, they just don't care, and they continue to do what they were doing on their phone and give me the ticket, and I'll go on my way. Some people don't care. Most people are pretty, pretty shocked when they get pulled over. They know they were in the wrong, they'll admit to it. You know, nine times out of ten, that person's most likely going to get a warning and don't do it again and move on with their day. And we'll, we'll try to keep, continue to educate people, and, but I am doubtful that the problem's going to get solved anytime soon. So.
All right. If there are no other questions, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, for bringing that to us this evening. Are there any presentation, or we got presentations, comments from the public tonight as we get into this a little bit? Anything?
I'm here because...
Would you come up and address the councilman? No, just up there at the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've spoken into a microphone.
No, go ahead.
I guess one of the reasons I'm here is, I think I read in the state mail that, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, but would you tell us who you are and where you live?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Elaine Marrier. I live in Marion Estates. Okay.
Okay.
A new, fairly new person. I've just, I'm big on cleanliness, and I'm kind of here to try to get the merchants and the employees around the stores to clean up their areas outside because I have talked to the property manager who handles O'Reilly's on down to the little convenience store by the Dollar Store about garbage cans, and he sets them out, which has helped. Since they arrested those druggies, there's less trash and so on, but the problem hasn't really been resolved, okay? And I did talk to a lady at the Ace Hardware. There were cigarette butts all out around the outside and things that just needed to be cleaned up, and she said hopefully she would take care of it. So I just would like, I don't know if you can do anything, maybe in the paper. I think there was an article about the appearance of the city of Staten. Hopefully, we can get the merchants and the employees to have garbage cans outside and try to keep the area cleaner. That's just my concern right now, and that's why I'm here, and I hope it'll improve in time. I know there's a lot of folks who don't care about those things. They like to throw their trash all over the place. But I just think if a garbage can is available, maybe they'll use it. So that's my concern, and that's hope that can be resolved.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, let's, let's, unless there's anyone else this evening, let's go into our consent agenda, and hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at that. And what would you folks like to do with those?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. And that doesn't merit discussion, so let's go to a vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, the ayes carry it, five to zero. And we have, the next thing is, there are no public hearings, there's no unfinished business, a new agreement for services with Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. Mr. Fleishman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you may recall back in September, you authorized staff to submit an application for a grant to the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development to plan for infrastructure improvements in the Wilco Road industrial area. And I believe in January or maybe early February, we came back to the council and got your approval to accept the grant. The grant that, that we received actually was not from the Department of Land Conservation and Development that we had applied to, but during that application process, the state's Business Development Department said, oh, hey, we've got money that we could fund this project with. So we actually, the grant came from the Infrastructure Finance Authority within Business Oregon. Once we actually had a grant contract, the city put out a request for proposals from consulting, for consultants, and we actually got zero response. There were no proposals submitted. And following the deadline for proposals, I approached the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments to find out whether they would be interested in doing the work. They said they would, and in the past several weeks, month and a half, we have developed the scope of work and budget that you have attached to the staff report from the, from the Council of Governments. And so we're here tonight to request for you to authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Cog for the consulting services as outlined in the work plan. The budget is about, is about ten thousand, ninety-five hundred dollars, ten thousand. You'll note that there is, and the major part of that is the preparation of an urban renewal plan, but that work will only proceed if, once the, we come back with an interim report that identifies all of the financing choices, and the council expresses interest in pursuing urban renewal for financing those infrastructure improvements.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. City council's presented the following options, accept the work plan, propose modifications, or reject it. What would you folks like to do with this tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brian?
I have a question for clarification, please. I'm trying to understand if I'm getting this right. The grant money was initially identified for Wilco Road industrial area, correct?
Correct.
But now we're saying, let's look at the urban renewal with that money?
We're looking at using urban renewal as one method of financing the improvements in the Wilco Road industrial area.
Okay.
Not, not downtown as other urban renewal efforts have been targeted.
Thank you. That's what I was going with.
Yeah, I thought someone would, would jump on that because that starts to wave red flags.
Right, which is why I wanted to make sure the council was aware that, that will be one of the options for financing public improvements.
I think to clarify, the, the idea is to look at all the options. It'll be one of the options, but to look at all the financing options and to explore all the opportunities. So I don't want to just say we're pigeonholing something or, or doing something. That's just an option that's out there, but this, the idea is to explore all the opportunities for financing.
Thank you. Other thoughts and questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is this kind of thing, has Cog done this before for other communities?
Yes.
Other questions, thoughts? Somebody like to move us forward on this?
Mr. Mayor, one more question, if I may?
That's all right.
One more question, if I may?
Sure, certainly.
Dan, so the ninety-five hundred dollars of the proposed contract, that comes from what source of funding?
That comes from the grant from the Infrastructure Finance Authority. The grant itself was for twenty-five or twenty-seven. The remainder of it is going to the city engineer, who is currently working on identifying what those improvements need to be and coming up with cost estimates for those improvements.
And Dan, that's been the, I guess, a stumbling block is the easiest thing I can come up with to development in that area. That Wilco Road area is the county, the state, they've got some requirements for infrastructure, our own development codes, and, you know, to what extent?
Correct. I mean, the, the, we've, we've got the forty-five acre Dozler parcel that's been on the, often on the governor's list of certified industrial sites, but there's not water or sewer service available to it. Any development that generates any substantial amount of traffic through the Wilco Road, Shaft Road, Golf Club Road intersection is going to trigger the need for signalization and intersection improvements. The cost of doing that is likely to be high enough to mean that nothing happens if we put those costs on the developer or business who wants to come to town. So the idea is if we want to see development happen in this area, the city's going to need to work with our other governmental partners and get some work done to have those improvements financed in advance. And so the, the grant, the grant is to identify what the improvements are that need to be done and cost estimates for doing it, and then coming up with a financing plan to get that done.
Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Dan, are we required to, do we need matching funds for that initial grant?
The fund, the, we are required to have some matching funds, and the grant was approved with all of the matching, all of the match being done by, in, by staff time, not a cash contribution.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move that we authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments in accordance with the attached work plan.
The second.
I have a motion and a second to go with option one, accept the work plan as presented. There any other discussion, please? Okay, let's go to a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Hearing none, we'll declare the motion passed five to zero, and we'll go ahead and get this, in a sense, this ball rolling.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Staff commission reports, finance directors report, Cindy and Elizabeth put together the financial data for the month, and it's there. I, Keith, I guess any questions could be directed to you, right?
That's correct.
If there are any? Keith, we're, it just seems, there ought to be a better way. I don't know what it is, but we send these courtesy delinquent notices to landlords on utility bills. A hundred-and-ten of them in March, a hundred-and-fourteen in April, and probably that many in May. There nothing else, no other system we can discover or buy or steal or any to change that? That just seems like such a waste of resources.
I, I mean, I agree with your statement as a whole. We can always, encouraged to always look and see other things we can do, and I'm more than willing to, to reach out and see if we can't come up with a new system or a new concept or idea, or see if some other community has done something creative or original or not so original to see if there's something that can be done to, to address that, or if there's some sort of additional tool or incentive that can be used to minimize that. Same thing with just kind of the, the monthly issues we have with utility billing as well. So it seems like, you know, a lot of those are just to the same people every month.
Yeah, I'm sure there are, yeah. Okay. All right, any, nothing on the Finance Department report? Police chief, Rich?
Mayor and council, you have a statistical report for the month of April before you. Most things are within track of previous months. We did, we, in the past few months, we have seen an increase in some of the property crimes, particularly with items being stolen from, out of people's vehicles, and we did have a couple of increases in burglaries. There were two particular neighborhoods that, that were having the majority of those happen in, and we addressed those issues by, we did a bunch of extra foot patrols in those neighborhoods. We put out some dummy patrol cars. We met with the neighbors in those areas, and then we actually ended up arresting, stopping a stolen car with a couple of the suspects in it that were involved in some of those. And then another stolen car out of the, one of those areas was, was recovered up in the, in the Portland area with the suspects from some of those other burglaries in that same area within Melso, so that seemed to, to stop the problem. The, the one thing that we would like to still encourage people to do is to lock their vehicles. When the officers were out on, on foot patrol, even after the vehicles had been broken into, there was nine vehicles on the street, and all nine of them were, were left unlocked that the officer found. And he went and knocked on their doors and, and let them know that they needed to lock their vehicles up. So people do need to lock their vehicles. The criminals are opportunists. They look for vehicles that are open, homes that are open, and things like that.
All right, thank you, chief. Questions or thoughts for him, for chief on police reports? Okay, Public Works Director, Lance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have my monthly operating report for April. I have nothing further to add, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Lance? Mr. Ludwig. Planning Development Director, Dan?
Just a second. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Oh, question, I'm sorry. Yes, please, facility.
Lance, can you tell us the, where the commercial building?
That was the, the church, St. Mary's Church.
Oh, the parish hall?
The parish hall.
Oh, okay, okay. And then the residential building or addition that was like a remodel?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so. I don't know. I mean, over thirty days permits come in, but I'm not sure if it was a remodel or...
It wasn't like a new house going up somewhere?
One residential SDC is ten thousand and then six thou, you know, I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
I guess I should break that out, remodeling.
No, I just, I just like to know if a new house is being built somewhere.
First line is new house.
What's the, there is building addition. I guess it's a building addition.
Okay. Dan, what have you got for us?
Well, again, you've got my report in front of you for April. There was the second session of the North San Am River Canyon Tourism Studio that I attended. Planning Commission approved in April. It was the MAPS Credit Union Site Plan Approval at their April meeting, and we also worked on some code amendments, which you'll be seeing in two weeks for, for a public hearing.
Okay. Pre-application meeting, all right. Library Directors Report, Pam?
Well, you can see that we've been busy from our, the report that I gave you, all the different activities that are going, and we're just going into our busy period, which is the summer reading program. You'd noticed this weekend in the park and the parking lot out in front of the library, we had a jumpy castle and all kinds of book giveaways. We had lunches to be served from the Marion County Lunch Distribution came and gave lunches, and we will be having those also at the library. It was a not-so-well-attended, and I think it was because it was the hottest day of the year. And it was, I really appreciate my employees that sat out there and from eleven until one. I have one more statistic that I didn't have in my report that I was, I'm very proud of, is that we have twenty-four volunteers, and these are people that come on a regular basis, weekly usually, and they've put in... usually, and they've put in over 206 hours in the last month. I thought that was quite a good thing, and we really love our volunteers. Do you have any other questions?
Pam, that reguttering of the library, is that all finished?
Yes, it is. It looks wonderful.
That's all done.
The gutters are nice and big, and we've noticed when we had those reins, that they weren't running down the walls like it was before.
Like that, right. Is there a roofing project scheduled for the summer also?
Yes, we plan on doing that when, as part of the levy.
Okay. All right, so, all right. Thank you. Let's see, presentations, comments from the public anymore this evening? Business from me? Polling the group earlier, it looks like we may have a small, I don't know if we've got a quorum for the 20th.
It does look like we have a quorum, but we'll probably need to talk to everybody and make sure, and if, if not, then we'll need to reschedule the meeting. So we'll work on that, because it is an important meeting that we have, so we'll work on getting the timing.
I did have another question, Mr. Mayor, before we get too far off the library.
Please.
Can we get just a little update on what it's looking like to fill the library position and when that may be occurring?
We are going through the process right now, and at this time, we don't have anything publicly to discuss.
Okay.
Okay. Good point, though. Back on that, on that meeting, Keith, is it possible to reschedule that for the 27th?
Yeah, we'll look and see, and Alyssa will get with and reach out to all the members of the governing body, and then also talk about available time, so we can reschedule that to the time that works, so we can make sure we have a quorum.
Alyssa says we have to have a meeting before the 1st of July to adopt a new budget.
We do.
Which seems like a good idea. It really does. It is a good idea. That's all I've got. I'm going to the Parks Board tomorrow night and make a pitch for a off-leash doggie activity or place, hopefully that doesn't stir any feathers, ruffle any feathers, there we go, and create problems for neighborhoods and whatnot. I want to see how they deal with it, no details yet. I'll see what they, how they deal with the idea and the place, and we'll bring it back to council if they're okay with it. So that's all I've got. Business from the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please. Brian?
Considering the comments from the resident of Marion Estates, I want to expand upon something that is my pet pee when it comes to, when it comes to using the right-of-way to basically dispose of anything you feel you don't have use for anymore. And specifically speaking of Second and Florence, and that intersection there in front of the old Trask Mercantile Building. Have you seen that lately? Have you seen it over the last four weeks?
No, I haven't.
There is appliances, there are couches, there is everything sitting directly in the right-of-way, and quite frankly, it looks like a pig's die. And I know that Chiefs has been working on trying to get compliance there, and I just want everyone else to be aware of it, because it doesn't bode well for our community, it doesn't bode well for downtown, and then quite frankly, it's a shame that people don't have pride in the community and feel they are compelled to be able to use the right-of-way, the sidewalk, in any manner they please. So to that note, please accept my gratitude for at least trying to get something done. I don't know what we can do for private property as you were explaining, but that definitely needs to be corrected.
Chief, do you want to talk a little bit about what we've done on that?
Sure. Where we're at with that, in that, yes, that is a, definitely a mess and a problem over there. On the 24th of May, the officers went over there, the ordinance officer as well, and they were cited for that. They didn't do anything with it, or didn't appear to have done anything with it, and they were again cited last week on June 1st, and then they were, they attempted to cite them again today, because it was still in the same state that it has been. We're also trying to reach out and talk to the actual property owner that owns it. We believe, we haven't been able to verify this yet with the property owner, but that they, that those people actually were evicted, have been evicted, but they're squatting in that building. So that brings around some other issues that we have to deal with.
I appreciate your help. You know, we talk about urban renewal in downtown and the blight and whatnot, and I'm sorry, but that just rubs me the wrong way, and it's been like that festering for weeks on end now, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're going to go to the parks about the dog park, which I just read an article about the immense popularity of the sprinkler water things that kids play in?
Splash pad.
Huh? What are they called?
Splash pad park.
Splash parks, is that what they're called?
Yeah.
Yeah. Apparently, parks that have those, their, what did I read, that their attendance of families in those parks like quadruple during the summer, of families using those parks when they have the sprinkler things in them. Parks Department might want to look at that.
Those seem to be, and I guess I'm just looking at the ones that get publicized on Portland television, they look, the areas look like small plazas, and the splash are in the, in the center or in that area, but there are all kinds of things around it, like a, like a small plaza of shaded picnic areas, seating, sidewalks and whatnot. So, yeah, neat, wonderful thing, especially in this warm, this beyond-warm weather of ours. Yeah, yeah, you bet. Where would we put something like that?
Pioneer Park.
Yeah, Pioneer Park.
Let's let the Parks Board determine that.
That's what the Parks Board is for, huh? Throw ideas at them. Okay. Well, I'm going to throw one at them, I, yeah, I don't know, I just, I don't know how they're going to deal. I'm just going to try it as a proposal.
Maybe we could put it in that lot across from Trask.
Another park, yeah. That'd certainly draw attention to it, that's for sure. Okay. Let's see. Business from the city administrator, I kind of, I didn't mean to...
You covered what I had written down, which is just the next meeting.
I knew you were there. Nothing?
That's all, thank you.
We're going to have to work on that, the future agenda items, all those things on that proposed June 20th meeting. That's almost too much to try to do with just a bare quorum, and may not even have a quorum. So we will work on rescheduling that meeting.
We'll send out, you'll get emails and probably phone calls tomorrow, and we'll work on schedule and figure out, notify as soon as we can.
Okay. Anything else this evening, folks? Let's go home. Thank you.